Good evening, call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Here.
Mr. Mandela?
Here.
And Mr. Sekala?
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments for items that are on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Good evening, board members.
Good evening, Mr. Pedder and Mr. Tavonier.
Before we get to our board business, do we have any committee reports this evening?
We do.
Mrs. Dye, surprise, surprise.
I know. It's been a little while. I attended the rec board meeting last week on the 6th. Not a big, not a big meeting. Basically, it's been decided that Bagel Witch will be back to be servicing all of the food needs at the pool area. There was a discussion about the concession stand at Panther Park, which is that really cool building that's kind of up there near the bathrooms and it's not really being utilized yet. It's not really a true snack stand yet, and they're not sure exactly when they're going to be able to open something. And one of the reasons is because there's, you know, there's not always people on the field, and so they're working kind of with the baseball team or the baseball club and with La Crosse to try to see if they can come up with something where they might be able to keep it open for periods of time, but that, they're still kind of working on that. So that's to be determined. And pickleball apparently starts this Friday. It's the supposedly the newest hottest sport in town, and as of last week, there were only 10 people signed up. So it would be great if more people signed up. I attended the rec board meeting and I am now also signed up for pickleball. So that was great that I was able to attend that meeting and I'm now doing that. So that was fun. Last night, I attended the, the middle school FSA meeting, which had been rescheduled from the prior week. And basically, there was a lot of thanks from the teachers for teacher appreciation week. They were very happy with, with everything that had been done for them. The only comment was winning lottery tickets would be more appreciated rather than losing ones next year, but still grateful. None, okay. How about, all right, let me refer to that. More winning tickets. How about that? So Thursday is Health and Wellness Day for the 5th graders. Friday morning is High Honorable Breakfast. Friday, the high school coaches are coming to speak to the 8th graders about the sports that are offered in the high school and how they go about registering and getting involved in high school sports. So that should be informative. May 27th is going to be the Science Ask Exam for the 8th graders. That's also, that same day is 4th grade orientation. The rocking horse ranch trip for the 8th graders is on May 28th. The middle school pool party is on June 3rd. Then we have Field Day, end of the year, lots going on. The 17th and the 18th, and it's split between grades. 8th grade graduation is June 18th. And lastly, the, there will be three new officers to the FSA. Maria Tabato will be president. Kim Sekala will be vice president. Judy Rogers will be recording secretary. And then Kelly Tenza remains corresponding secretary and Stephanie Mazinski remains treasurer for another year. And the next meeting, the last one, will be June 1st. Lot going on at the middle school.
One question about Panther Park. Do you know if the bathrooms are open yet? Because a lot of people have been asking me about whether they've opened them for...
You know what? They were open, but I, from what I understand, they haven't been open full-time.
There was a gentleman there Friday night, and so I think they have, I don't know if it's a volunteer position or someone that's there that will open them, because he came by the stands and said they were open.
Oh.
So I think when they have kind of these folks...
One of the problems, thank you, that was discussed, and I forgot about it, is one of the problems is the bathrooms can be locked from the inside, and so that seems to happen numerous times, I get, I think in the boys bathrooms specifically. And so that gentleman you're referring to had to like numerous times at one event keep unlocking the door. So they're actually looking into ways of how do they do it where the doors won't get locked accidentally.
Gotcha.
So, yes, thank you, I forgot about that.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports this evening? Okay, let's move on to our board presentation, and we are happy to welcome Mr. Frank Mandela, who's no stranger to the Board of Education to provide...
I thought there was another presentation before mine. Is that removed from the agenda tonight? Mr. Kinney's?
Yes, Mr. Kinney is not, will not be presenting tonight, so this is...
Yeah, yeah. No. No, it's already on there. Good evening, everyone. Board members, this was really for your purpose, but I'm glad that we have an audience tonight just to go over, as I said in the last meeting, some of the topics that we discussed were going to sit with me for a few days, and I would think about it over and over again. And one of the things that I mentioned at the last meeting was everything was about perception. And again, the only point that I'm, the only thing that I, the reason for this presentation tonight is again, a different perspective on how to look at contracts throughout different districts. That is the only purpose of this presentation, is to put out, is to give information to the community and also to my fellow board members that are not on the negotiation team. And believe it or not, it was sort of a great exercise for myself doing this, because I spoke to a lot of different BAs from a lot of districts in our, in our county, and also received actual contracts, which was amazing to see, because a lot of times, we go by hearsay and not really know the information. So really, when I spoke to the BA of doing a presentation like this, it's really just a factual type of presentation, just to again, give a different perspective on how things can be stated in different ways. So tonight, what you're going to see is a comparison of where, again, this was based on a comment that was made at the last meeting, that we fall at the bottom of the salaries for our county. And also, again, it's based on how you look at those different counties, and that's what we're going to do tonight. So, on the agenda, we'll, I'll look at Essex County School Districts for comparison. Why, again, this is a perception or my look at this. Again, it's the way I'm looking at it. Not that it's the way it should be, but I think after I present the facts or we see what's going on, you'll hopefully understand why I chose communities that I did to compare Cedar Grove with. You'll see why we are not comparing apples to apples. Schools that can be compared to Cedar Grove. We'll look at additional benefits that are in our contract compared to our surrounding communities. And then, since we're always comparing ourselves to Verona, I just took Verona as an example for tonight to actually compare their entire guide to ours. So that way you can see, because again, since I've been on the board, it seems like Verona is the key town that everyone always hits upon in every area to compare us to. So that's, I thought, was important to do. So with that being said, these are the districts that fall under Essex County. And I got this information, you know, with the help of the BA, and also statistical information of what's out there. And, you know, when I hear that we fall at the bottom, when I look at these districts, again, the slides that will be coming forward, you'll see how I have them grouped. But this has all the districts in the county, in our county. And what I did next is why not apples to apples? And again, the reason why I did this, it's all based on perception. When the community hears or people hear that we're at the lowest in our county, it sounds horrible. But there's reasons. Each district is unique in its own way. So what I did was, I based it on, in my opinion, reasons why we cannot be compared to the districts that I have on this slide. And in the first grouping, you'll see Belleville, Bloomfield, Nutley, West Orange, South Orange, Maplewood. You'll see the number of students in that district, and in my comments, that's just to help me, you know, tonight, explain. In the comments, they're larger districts, much more state aid, so that gives them more dollars to work with. And to give you an example of that, Belleville, for example, just passed their budget. But in their budget, their total community budget, their tax levy budget was $35 million. In state aid, they received $25 million of that $35 million in state aid. Just to give you an idea of Cedar Grove, our tax levy budget was at around $25 million, and we received $757,000 state aid. So that gives you an idea of where most of our dollars are coming from, our taxpayers, and not coming from state aid. That is true for Bloomfield. Bloomfield numbers are, they were, their tax levy budget was $69,000, and they received $20 million, almost $21 million in state aid. So that's where that grouping comes from, as an example. In the next grouping, the reason why I don't feel that it's fair to compare Cedar Grove to the Newark, East Orange, Irvington, or Orange, is because they're considered urban districts and they're classified A. Am I right with that? Right. So I don't feel that it was a fair comparison, especially when you look at Newark with 36,000 students. I don't think that grouping, I don't think you, I'm hoping you would agree that we would not be at same comparison there. Now, again, I did not look at those guides. They may as, they might have better salaries than we do. They may have better benefits than we do. But in my opinion, you're not comparing the same type of communities as Cedar Grove. So again, I don't know their salaries. I did not look into that. Livingston and Milburn, you'll see that I have a question mark there, because there's some that may feel that we should be compared to Livingston and Milburn, and then there's others that may feel that we don't. The only reason why, for my reasoning that I put on here, that they're not apples to apples, is I believe maybe the philosophies of the communities may be different than ours. And the reason why I state that is again, I go back to this year's budget. They went over their cap at 3.1% and 3.6% respectfully. If, I don't think that if we as a community tried to go over cap that much, we would pass our budget. So when I look at that, I just felt that, and again, I looked at the size of the community, the districts as well, and I just felt that that wasn't a fair comparison at this time. Again, probably in those communities, I would say the salaries are higher than here in Cedar Grove or other parts of the contract. But again, I didn't feel that that was a fair comparison. With Montclair, Montclair's an independent, they run differently. Their town, it's an appointed board. I believe the town council has input on their budgets and funding, so it's a totally different run school system than any of the districts in our county. And then lastly, there's Essex County Vocational and Essex Regional Ed Services. Again, a vocational school, and I believe the last one, is that a special ed type of district? I'm not sure. So those are the districts that I feel are not apples to apples. So when you hear that we're at the bottom, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 out of 18 or 19 districts that I don't really feel that it's fair to compare us to. So let's move on to the school, the towns that I think are comparable. As you could see, Cedar Grove, we have 1,643 students. Verona has 2165. Caldwell, West Caldwell is 2643. Glen Ridge is 1,906. And you'll see that West Essex Regional is highlighted in red. The reason why I have that highlighted in red is because I would use them as an example. However, while I was doing my data, through 7 through, it's a regional school, it's 7 through 12, they all have different boards, they all have different superintendents, it's a much larger, I mean for 7, that's only 7 through 12, the 1,637. And yes, if you look at their guide, it's amazing. I could tell you right now, if anybody wants to go get a job, that's a great school, I mean, looking at their contracts, I, it's pretty impressive. I'm not just saying that. But it was, that's 7 through 12. However, when you look at their K through 6, so that's why I didn't know how to use this one, but I wanted to put it on there just to say, it could be, if you wanted to look at that, in different ways, in other areas. But when we look at their K through 6 contracts, we, again, they are not very competitive to what we offer and what these other districts offer. So that's why I was kind of unclear of whether to use that or not, because it's a K through 6. Those four schools have their own guides, their own superintendents, their own boards, but then when you go into the regional, they all come together. So that's the reason why that's in red. I hope that was clear. So now, let's look at guides. So for the arguments of this, I left West Essex off, because as I said, they, in some areas, I mean, in most areas, they're very, very strong, but again, it's a different animal with being a regional. So now, let's look at Cedar Grove, Verona, Caldwell, West Caldwell, and Glen Ridge. You'll notice that I have highlighted for our school year 2013, 2014, because those are the numbers that I had to use for our, from our salary guide. The other districts are based on current, their current year. So as you could see, in a BA step 1, you could see the salaries across the board with Cedar Grove being at 47, 625, Verona 46, Caldwell 48, 5, and Glen Ridge 51. And as I stated, we're based on without an increase for this year, and you could see that we're very, very competitive. Then we go up to step 5. The reason why we have a G, we use letters in ours, they use numbers in their guides. At step 5, we're at 51, 625. Again, for, this is based on a BA. The last chart I'll show you will be, you'll see everything, but right now, I'm looking at a BA. On step 5, we're at 51, 6. Verona's 50. Caldwell's 52, 8. And Glen Ridge is 52, 47. So you could see, again, without an increase for this year, we are very competitive without an increase. So if we did have a contract in place with some type of increase, we would probably either be equal to Glen Ridge and Caldwell or surpass them. In a BA step 10, we're at 59, 751. Verona's 57, 577. Caldwell's 59, 026. And Glen Ridge is 58, 247. So you could see clearly, without an increase, we are the, at step 10, we surpassed the other districts, and that's without any increase for this year. Now, when we talk about top of the guide, we stop at, each district, again, I just want a clarification for people that don't understand guides, the community, this is really who this presentation is for, and the board members. Each community has a different type of guide setup. They have different steps, number of steps on the guide, and it's really, it's, it's, there's really no rhyme or reason. It's really a matter of whatever was, you know, negotiated throughout the years on how to set up the guide. Ours happens to be a 15-step guide. Verona's is 17. Caldwell's is 14. And Glen Ridge is 17. So if we just look for comparison sake at top of the guides, where we stop at step 17 on our guide, we're at 74,102. With Verona, if we just look at their step 15, which equals our, our step 15, they're at 73, 478. Caldwell stops at step 14 at 65, 466, but you'll see later on where they become very aggressive. And then Glen Ridge is at 70,434 at step 17. I, I just realized that I didn't break down to see where they were, only because we had already surpassed them at step 15, so I didn't think it was necessary to show what their 15 step was in 16. So that's the basics of just taking the 10, like every five-year increment and then hitting the top of the guide. So now, when we look at additional benefits that go along with a total contract, sick days is pretty much equal across the board, because what Caldwell does, they don't give personal days, but they allow you to take two of your days from your sick days. So really, it's pretty comparable in both the sick day area and personal days. Family leave, as you could see, Cedar Grove does not offer family leave. Neither does Caldwell or West Caldwell. Verona and Glen Ridge, speaking to both of their BAs, they have them, but the reason why this is here is because they say it's, it's very seldom, they're asked for them. It has to be, you know, very serious illnesses, and Glen Ridge requires a doctor's statement. And then unused personal days rollover, as you could see, pretty comparable across the board, well, 2, 1, and 3, but you know, again, we're, you know, competing with the other Moving on with longevity. For those of you who may not understand what longevity is, and again, just referencing back to the last meeting, because again, as I said, there were things that were misinterpreted. For example, my statement to Ms. O'Connell that was here, and when I said, "You don't understand what I'm saying," and everyone thought that I was being condescending, that she didn't understand contracts. That's not what I was saying. At last meeting, I was very hesitant in saying certain things, because I wasn't sure if I was legally able to say things. I was afraid of being brought up, you know, on ethics charges, because this is serious stuff that we're discussing. So I held back rather than say something. I'd rather have, you know, gotten counsel advice of what I could say and what I can't say. And that's what I was going to talk about, is in contracts, it's not always about just looking at salaries. There's these components of longevity that people don't talk about or know about. And that's what I had asked her at the end of the meeting, and she was not aware that we had these longevities in our contract. So again, it's just clarifying some of the things that happened at last meeting that were very upsetting to me, and I just, again, wanted to let you know the reasons why I was saying certain things or the way it might have come out. So in our contract in Cedar Grove, longevity, after 10 years of service, we add on to their salary $75 per year, starting at 10 years. So for example, at your 10th year, I showed you on the last slide, our BA salary is 59, 751. Now you would add $750 to that amount, and that would be the real salary for Cedar Grove. So again, being very competitive in that area, where, again, we haven't even taken a, an increase for this school year. So again, we go from 10 through 15 years, you get $75 per year of service. After your 15th year, you, or 16th year, you get $130 for every year that you're here. Then, Verona, their longevity doesn't kick in until 20 years, and they just give $300 up until your 24th year. It's a flat $300 each year. Then they go to 20, at your 24 years of service, you get $1,200, and then at your 29 years of service, you get $3,000. So now, if you took our 20, if you took 29 times $130, I believe it's $3,800 and something dollars. I'm going by memory, because I did all these formulas before tonight, just to figure it out. Ms. Marinelli, figure it out for me?
3,000 times 130. That was wrong.
130 times 29. So ours would be $3,770 at year 29. They stop right here, and you get 3,000 for your 30th year, your 31st year, your 32nd year, where we continue giving the extra $130 for those years of service. Now, here's where Caldwell, it's, theirs is not called longevity. They, after talking to the BA, it was still kind of hard to understand, because they really customized this from after speaking with him, customized for reasons that work with their community right now. But it's not very afford, it's very hard for them to sustain it, but it's going to be a short, they feel it's going to be a short timeframe of where they're paying out a lot of dollars. But they have what's called OFF guide, and you can earn up to a total salary, if you remember, their last slide was 65, 466. You can earn up to, at the top of the guide, 101,000. And then, I believe even in some areas, correct me if I'm wrong, Renee, there's some, some instances, it's not very common, and it's going, definitely going to be, going away, but there's some that can earn up to $120,000, correct? Okay. So, but again, it's not a real formula. It's very customized for their community, and not many people fall into that category. And then in Glen Ridge, after 20 years of service, it's $1,255, and then after 25 years of service, it's 1,874. Again, they stop there, where ours continues to add on the $130. Now, what we also offer, that other communities don't at all, as you can see, we have what's called an additional longevity. And what this is, is for your years of public education experience. And I believe the only thing I'm missing from here is that you need to have at least a minimum of five years of service in Cedar Grove. Am I stating that correctly, Renee?
14 years of service in Cedar Grove.
14. 14 years in Cedar Grove, so I had it the opposite way around. Okay. So it's 14 years of service in Cedar Grove, and then there's an additional longevity that's put on, on top of this, and then on top of the salary. So you could see that after 20 years, there's, and we stop here, this does not keep increasing. So when you hit your 20th year, anything over 20 years, it's a flat $4,120. So you could see, we're very competitive in where we offer, it's not always just looking at the salary guide. How come it's not going? What happened?
They pulled the phone on.
What happened?
They pulled the phone on.
It just really goes to the very last slide, which is only going to be on there a second anyway. So you could stay there for me a second. This slide that is here, it's like an eye chart. So what I did was, it's in, going to be in the presentation on, on the website and all of that, but I made it into an Excel spreadsheet to make it easier to look at. So if you can, no, there's an Excel spreadsheet. The only reason why I want that one is because I have it highlighted for reasons. That's the other... Okay. So now, what you're seeing here is a, the comparison of just Cedar Grove to Verona. And I took every step on the guide, and I took, well, I shouldn't say every category, I took the main ones, because we have a BA and a BA plus 15, so does Verona. We have an MA and an MA 15, but Verona does not. We have an MA and an MA 15, but Verona does not. This is, there's a, there's two columns missing. Is it not fitting on the screen for some reason?
Fitting on the screen.
So, as, as Mr. Marinelli's working that, there's an MA and an MA, we have an MA 15, and then an MA 30. Verona doesn't offer an MA 30, an MA 15, they just jump right to an MA 30. So, I left out our... Is that, could you read that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, what we have here is, again, if, and what I have highlighted in yellow are the areas that we, that were, Verona is slightly higher than us in salaries. But again, what I want to point out is, this is based on Cedar Grove 2013, 2014, where Verona's is based on current 2014, 2015 guide. So as you can see, in the whole BA area, until the very bottom, Verona surpasses us. Okay? Now what you're seeing in parentheses is the longevity added on to the base salary, and this is where the real dollars are. However, if you were to keep going down to step 20 and beyond, we catch up to Verona when we start coming down here, because remember, this is, the next step is where our second longevity kicks in. So as you keep going, they stay pretty stagnant for the next three years, until they hit their 20th year, where they get $300. And that $300 stays consistent until their 24th year, where ours, we get that second longevity that kicks in, plus our dollar amount keeps adding on, on the first longevity. So we catch up when we get down to this area here. And the other reason why I think we're a little off, and again, it was surprising to me, because I never really looked at our guides, as you could see, the last three steps of our guide, there was no movement in any, in the BA 15 or BA. Okay? So, again, not knowing the reason why, but there's no movement here. So, and we're still competitive. Okay? Now, when you move over to the Cedar Grove BA 15, you'll see that, again, it's at the bottom last two steps, where Verona surpasses us. However, if you see, it's only $500. Remember, this is based on last year's guide, for us. So if there was some type of increase, we would be surpassing this step for sure. I don't think we would meet up here. They would still be ahead of us at step 18. Now, when you go into the MA column, you'll see that there's a cluster here in the, in the, lower to the middle of the guide, where they're slightly ahead of us, right now. But again, we had no increase here. So if we had the increase for this school year, this, these numbers, we would either surpass them, or we would be comparable to Verona, in all areas. Again, except for the last step on the guide. And lastly, in the MA 13, uh, MA 30, I'm sorry, you could see that there's some, there's a larger discrepancy here. And even if we had the increase here, I don't think we would meet Verona's guide here on MA 30. However, when you get to the steps 11, 12, 13, and 14, we surpass them, or equal to, and this is without increases here. And the same when we get down here, we start to get closer, but not really. But again, this is without an increase in our column. And then again, our longevities will kick in, again, in this area here. So I thought this was pretty interesting to look, and again, this was just a, a, a learning experience for myself. And what I learned from the whole thing is that it's not fair to really judge any guide or any community, because it's suitable for what's going on at that time, or whatever may be negotiated at that time of those contracts, that are out of control of a lot of people. So, I just, that was the reason why I wanted to do this exercise, for my own edification, to know where we really are. To hear that we're at the bottom, it just bothered me. But then, after seeing the communities that fall into our county, and then comparing where I did, I think it's a much better perspective overall, of where Cedar Grove lies, and that we are competitive, and that we do offer competitive salaries, we do offer competitive benefits to our staff. So with that, I hope it was informative. What's that?
There's two more pages in your presentation.
Oh, there was? Oh, on the guy, on the contract, sorry.
And, and Mr. Mandala, before you, before you do that, just, I don't know if there's anything we can do, but I just received a text that there's no audio going out to the people at home.
Okay.
They only can see the spreadsheet and the little green dot, but nobody can hear anything that you, that you had to say, at least on, on Optimum. I don't know about Verizon, but anyone who's watching Optimum isn't getting, isn't getting value. So I don't know if there's some...
Start all over again. So I guess...
And now I'm getting a text that they are, it is being heard on Verizon, so anyone who's watching on channel 26 can hear, but if you're watching on channel 76, Optimum, you can't.
Now they can? Or your husband? So some Optimum users can.
Okay, maybe some can, some can't. But he's on Sherman as well. He's on the other side of Sherman, though, so maybe it's just...
Okay, so going back, I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot about these two slides. Going back to just contracts and other areas of where we are compared to our, our surrounding communities, on sick day payout, as you could see, we're $70 per day, times 90% of the total number of days, at 14 years of service at retirement. Verona's is $75 a day, at 10 years of service. Caldwell is $70 a day, maximum of 300 days, and then Glen Ridge has a whole scenario here. And then additional teaching periods, here we are. This is Verona's, is greater than six teaching periods a day, they get a fifth of their regular salary. Caldwell doesn't really have this in their contract. So, I wasn't, I, I realized after I spoke to the BA that they didn't have this, I didn't want to call them back just for that, but they do not have anything written in their contract about teaching an additional period. And then Glen Ridge is a flat rate of 6179. And then here you have professional development, we're at 50% for workshop cost, Verona doesn't address it. Caldwell, West Caldwell is two days per year approved by the Board of Ed, and Glen Ridge is per board approval. And then lastly, tuition reimbursement. Cedar Grove offers, allows six credits per year, at the Montclair State rate, with a maximum of $60,000 total. In Verona, it's 75% of the MSU rate for an MA degree, and 50% of the MSU rate, if not an MA program. In Caldwell, it's nine credits for your first master's degree, and six credits beyond your first MA. And that's your dollar amount. And Glen Ridge is half of us, they only offer three credits. They only allow three credits, $178 a credit, with $32,500 as a total max. And then there's your curriculum rate pay. And Glen Ridge did not address that. So that's pretty much my presentation, I guess. Are there any questions from the board, or even any comments?
You just have to go to a microphone. People who have audio would like to hear you.
Yeah, I will, tell me which one.
This slide, the salary guide BA. Do I have to state my name?
No, it's okay for, for that, that's at the end of the meeting.
I just wanted to clarify, BA step one, on our guide, is actually step 1, 2, and 3, because we've eliminated the first two steps in the last contract. So someone teaching here 10 years is actually not on step L. Someone teaching here 10 years is actually on step J, which changes many of those figures in comparison. So, for example, someone on step 5, where you have step G, is actually our step E, which is $49,625.
Wait, let's go to this, let's go to this slide, maybe it'll be easier to show. So that way we'll be able to understand what you're saying. Because that's all our steps down.
I know, this is very confusing, though, because our BA column is near the Cedar Grove, the way the columns are split, and they don't have letters now, because your steps are gone.
Okay, so this would be, oh, here, A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
So go back to, no, because Steph...
I saw it at C, right?
Right, which is actually our step 1, 2, and 3. It's our step 1, 2, and 3, because in order to make our salaries more competitive, we put more money in the last contract at the starting salary. In order to do that, we took away steps 1 and 2, which are A and B.
Right.
So someone teaching here five years is actually not on letter G, making $51,625. They're actually making $49,625, which is where your step 3 is, because that's technically a five-year mark in our district. A 10-year mark in our district is actually not 59, if you go down to your step 10. That's actually not our salary, it's 10 years of experience. Our salary is 54,251, if you go up. So when you're comparing 10 years in Verona, to 10, excuse me, to 10 years in Cedar Grove, it's actually not an accurate assessment, because we took two years away from our salary guide. So a teacher being honored this year for 10 years of service is actually only on letter J.
Is that for new teachers, or is that for people that...
No, it's for, new teachers are the only one that that actually applies to, but teachers that have been here, you have to move that, those steps up, in order to compare apples to apples, if you want to. Do you understand, you know what I'm, I don't know if I'm being clear.
But I guess...
It does.
I do understand...
Because we're not numbered anymore, because we removed the top two steps, everything really moves up, so you really can't compare...
So are those the same presentations I should have asked over a year?
Well, yeah, Mr. Mandala, if I can, if I can interject, because in Verona, the last contract, we didn't move three steps, we only moved two over three years. So, it gets very hard to compare... Right, no, I know, but it makes it very hard to compare.
But we're still two steps behind.
The contract only moved twice, and we took a half of the year free.
Right, no, but, but what I'm saying is, if we're, all I'm trying to say, that to try to compare, to make, to clarify this, I think, I, I just think we have to have an understanding of, that they all move a little bit. It's not apples to apples, back to what Mr. Mandala said. And I think, I think what you're bringing up is a perfect thing to bring up, but I think we have to understand that that happens...
That might happen across...
Exactly. So this can be, it's going to make it very hard to compare.
But when this presentation was presented, it's not presented that way, so someone at home, you know, thinks... No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, so this way, they understand that the comparison isn't always equal. And our other concern, just to bring it up, is we understand that there are places we are comparable. We're not saying we're not. However, the step that we are remaining on for the bulk of our careers, some of us, you know, I'm, I've been teaching 22 years, so I'm going to be at step 17, for possibly, according to my age, another 13 years. So that's where the money is significantly different, that yes, we may be...
My question to you is help me understand, because I don't understand, so, because I don't make up the guides.
Right.
Does that mean that we look at adding steps to a guide to help that? Or do you just put, keep putting money at this last step, and then your longevity money is what your increments are? Help me understand...
There's multiple, there's obviously multiple ways to create a salary guide, I'm not debating that, what I'm...
No, no, I don't...
No, no, and I'm saying, that's obviously something we work... It depends, I guess, on a percentage of growth. If we don't have money, we can't put money anywhere.
Wait, I have a quick question.
No, no, my question is, if you were going to put the money here, again, this is just to help. So if you put money here, instead of putting more, like, put less money here, and then you add another step, does that help?
It helps if you're adding a significant amount of money that is going to increase. For example, at your step, where you're talking about your maximum, so you're adding in longevity on that back screen, you were adding in our longevity.
Right.
I didn't see you adding in Verona's longevity.
It didn't add until 20.
Okay.
I didn't go up to 20 on our guide.
But the most a Cedar Grove teacher can make at the top of the guide is 94,860. If you look at the top...
With longevity, without...
With longevity. So that's the total, like, someone can make at the top, is 94,000. Verona's top of their guide is already 99,8, before their longevity.
No, I agree, but what I meant, so, doesn't the 70, doesn't the 130 keep getting added on, no matter how many years you're here? Or do we, we don't stop that at a certain number of years if you're there? So even though, I mean, I know it's $130, but I'm just using it for argument's sake, that longevity, the only one that...
That's your increase every year. Right, so I get that after 20 years in public education, and that, so that's not an increase.
Right.
So the $130 is.
Is the increase.
Right. But you're talking, the top of their guide is already 99,8, without their longevity included.
Okay, so then, this is just a question, help me understand. So what happens is, then, is it a fair statement to say that each time you negotiate, that, not negotiate, or each time a new contract is done?
Right.
Should a different part of the guide be looked at, instead of the same part of the guide each time? Or is that not a fair statement? So, for example, the last contract, as Mr. Canella said, and you said, we were focused on the bottom of the guide.
Right, right.
So now this time, and again, we don't do that, your side does the guide, would we then say, okay...
Last time, I don't believe our side did the guide.
We don't do that.
No, we recommend it. Wait, I have a quick question about that.
I just wanted, one...
I wasn't on the last negotiation, so I don't know who did the guide, but I was under the assumption it was not...
Mr. Mandala, we need to make sure everyone is speaking to the microphones. I know you don't have one there, and Ms. Coquelin, you need to speak into the microphone.
Okay.
Because we're not getting the audio at home.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, is that how...
Do you want to...
Frank, you have to talk to Mike.
You have to go by your microphone before...
So I guess what I'm asking, thanks, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, when you do the guides, and, or each time you do a different contract, to look at different steps that were not touched the previous time, because you made that right, that, those three years, so then the next contract, you look at the areas. For me, this was an eye-opener, and I agree with you, that on the top of the guide, we're not competitive in those areas. I agree with you. So, does that mean that we now, or not us, but with this contract, you look to put money in the areas where we're, you know...
Lacking.
Lacking. And then the next contract, you would hope that we stayed competitive in the, the one we just did, the previous contract, and then maybe it's the middle of the guide? Or maybe you go back to the middle and the bo, like, I'm just throwing out examples.
No, and I think Ms. O'Connell, when she was talking last week, was kind of alluding to that, that you, we obviously can't get up to par on every level. It would take a lot of money, and it wouldn't be fiscally responsible. However, if you address different areas of the contract, then you can start equating them to other districts in the area.
So that's...
And so, yes, I would agree with that.
Great.
If the money's there, yes.
Okay, good.
Can I just ask one quick question? Jen, okay, so, what you were talking about in the beginning, in the, I guess, bottom of the guide, a new student, a new teacher...
You mean the starting?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, starting salary, starting salary. So a new teacher coming in, not an existing, non-existing first or second year. So a, a new teacher coming in would start at step C.
C.
And then they will go to D.
Right. So a new hire, in essence, yes, that is step 1, 2, 3 for them. For teachers that are here, because the first two steps were taken away, in essence, a teacher who's been here five years could technically be making only a few dollars more than a new hire, because those first two steps were removed.
So they would be on letter what?
Which, which group?
The scenario you just mentioned.
So a teacher who's been, who was teaching here five years, just give me a second. A teacher who was on BA step 5 is now only on step E, when you change the guide. So, instead of being step 5, they're really only C, D, E, they're three steps down. So instead of being step five, they're really only C, D, E, they're three steps down, even though they have five years of experience in Cedar Grove.
Right, so the, the forty-eight in the D and the forty-nine in the E, I'm just using that first column as an example, just to BA as an example, that wasn't crunched, that wasn't condensed, so that was, that wasn't-
Which letter, which number are you talking about?
I'm sorry, I, like, two, I guess. Oh, okay, two, I guess.
Okay.
Two, three, forty-nine. The, the only step that was condensed was C.
Well, it wasn't really condensed, step one and two just went away.
But they were hired at step one.
Who?
The teacher that was here for five years, right.
The teacher that was here at, at five years, yes.
Okay, so their salary did grow.
It did grow.
Okay, each year, but then it stopped, right.
Right, but then it stopped.
It stopped while there was no increase in the next year?
Because you got rid of steps.
Well, that's only because we didn't have a contract for this year. If we had a contract, you would be a step higher, right?
It would be a percentage higher.
Percentage higher. Okay. I just want to be clear, too, when you're saying that we, we didn't freeze that, okay. I just want to make sure, because the guides, we don't do that. I love this, I love this dialogue, and I'm glad that it's turning out the way it is right now tonight, because- Oh, for the step, for the beginning.
For the beginning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, no, no, I'm talking about overall guide. I'm not talking about the beginning, I was talking about overall. So when they're talking about like, step nine and step ten, I don't know what money goes there, but you totally agree, that was a board, we, we reck, we wanted that, so we really, I agree with you.
Okay.
Absolutely. No, 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 not at all. And the other thing I wanted to point out, too, again, it's all a matter of what goes on in the community, because again, like I said, talking to different BAs, there's different philosophies about starting salaries as well, because, you know, there's some that believe that you don't need to be so competitive in, or the money, don't put so much in the beginning, because the, they should pay their dues and, if you want to use that term, and get the experience, and then start earning money as they go up the guide. I get that philosophy, you know, but when we looked at the last contract, we were so off, and it was really recommendations of our board attorney, because our starting salary before the last contract, we were at forty-five thousand dollars, low end, we were like at the bottom of forty-five. So that's where that recommendation came from. So again, the rest of the money where that goes, it's, it's really not in the board, we don't real, we approve the end of the guide when it's given to us, but we don't have input of where the, all the rest of the monies go. So when we have this dialogue of, of where we should look at, I think this is great, because it was an eye-opener for me, because I didn't realize that the top three of our steps were the same. So this was a great, like, this was a great exercise for me, so-
So right there, there's no, there's no increase in three years.
Right, exactly, exactly.
I just want to make sure that everybody knows that last time we negotiated, there were certain places in, of, of where you guys wanted things.
We totally wanted at the bottom. I to, I agree.
Okay, I was gonna say, so, so I don't-
No, I, I totally agree, and I thought we said that.
Because you had mentioned, when it came to creating the guides last time, unfortunately, almost everybody that was here was there, over here, so, the attorney board, the, the board attorney Tony Skriller was there-
Mr. Tanella, can you please just speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, um, the attorney, Anthony Skriller was there, and our, we got the impression that he kind of was in charge of creating the guides, presenting it to our side, presenting to your side, with the caveat that, that the money needed to go to the bottom in order to get a settlement, and considering we were a year, almost a year and a half in.
We were told he created it with, under your recommendations. We, as a team, really didn't have a whole lot of say at, at that time.
We, our, well, one of our recommendations is, and we were upfront, is to attack, to attack the, the starting salary, because it was-
Then that's the reason why-
But the rest of it, we didn't have any input on any of the rest of that.
And another tool to do that, I'm sorry, and another tool to do that was to cut off the two first steps.
Correct.
And just so you understand, though, at least for this year, you are, and several years later, until people, until new people come into the district, the comparisons have to be made that steps one, two, three are actually C, or if, depending on what we do with the contract this year, to re, to re, put new numbers-
Right, right, and that, but that was, and that was something that we, you know, we knew upfront, that we wanted to make our starting salary more attractive, because, you know, if you have an offer from Verona or offer from Cedar Grove, what do you, you know, you want to attract those younger, talented teachers. Now, you know, looking down at thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, you know, I don't know, that's, you know, that, that, there's no raise there in three years, that, you know, so if you-
Well, that's what we were thinking, like, you guys are very enticing at the beginning, but for the people who have been here a long time-
I see that.
It's not.
I agree.
It's not, and I think that's probably why so many people are, are down in the dumps, because-
But totally agree. Right, because we don't, we don't do any, we don't, the, the things when we were, when we were putting it together, I think Tony might have come up with, for recommendations, there were five different, if I remember correctly, there were five different scenarios. You know, there were five different guides that we offered and, and worked from, you know, there were a bunch of different scenarios, all, including the, the upfront. But, you know, those were, you know, those were talking points.
And like I said, the only recommendation we made is we definitely want it to be competitive, but again, like our dialogue before, to me, it's a matter of just looking at the guides as you, each time you do a new contract, and I think this is an exercise that should be done every single time, just to compare where we fall, because just like the other communities, they negotiate a different contract every time as well, and I just think it would be something that this works, you know, this just to me, really opened my eyes in certain areas that I didn't even, I wasn't aware of.
And it's also too good getting input, like, to hear from, you know, the five-year teacher and the, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because you don't get that, no, but that's good, though, because you don't, you know, we don't get that.
Any other questions or comments? I, I hope this was helpful, because I know that, I could tell you that our superintendent was a little concerned with me doing the presentation tonight, and I assured him that it was really just a factual, it was just really just giving out information that I had learned through just gaining the contracts from other areas. So I hope it was helpful, I hope it, it just furthers our dialogue and moving forward to where we all want to go. Yeah.
Hi.
Barbara Weber.
It takes us so much longer to catch up with everybody else. Do you look at a scattergram to see where people, the five-year teacher, the ten-year teacher, the twenty-three-year teacher, do you see how many people are at each level?
I believe it's on the level of the, when we do it, the BA does that along with our board attorneys.
And when you do the scattergram, these, these things, you could put a lot of money at seven, and there's nobody there.
Agreed.
What?
Oh, I guess it's talking to-
Speaking to the microphone. Speech teacher can't read sign language. You can put a lot of money at year one at step seven, which is fifty-three thousand, and there's not a soul there. You could put ten thousand dollars there. The district is now saving ten thousand, and there isn't a soul that you're paying that ten thousand.
But again, just so you know, I totally agree.
So my question is, do you look at that, do you see where people actually are before you put the money?
I, we don't put the money, that's my-
Somebody puts the money, and according to the negotiating team that just spoke, it's not them, it's your attorney, or whomever it might be.
Well, you know, well, like I said, like, they'll make recommendations, and we share them attorney to attorney. You know, at the end of the day, we don't, you know, we don't say, we don't tell your attorney, you know, that's presented, that, I think there were maybe three, three to five different scenarios over the course of the negotiation period, and, you know, they'll look at them, the attorneys look at them, and kind of dodge that through.
Well, that's, that's the thing, you could put a lot of money at one step, and there's nobody there.
No, but just so you know, this last negotiation, because this is my third one, this last negotiation was the first time the board ever had input that we were, in part of our negotiation, that we wanted to increase our starting salary. Prior to that, the board had no input on a guide, it always came from the association, and then the board just either approved it or, or disapproved it. And I could tell you, the only things that have been rejected in years past was when there was more money that wanted to be added to longevity areas, and the board was not in favor of adding to longevities. Because as a matter of fact, a lot of those districts I put up there, and after talking to BAs, they're actually going to be, for new hires, cutting their longevities in half going forward. So that's an area where new teachers are not going to have that same benefit. So otherwise, like I said, the last negotiation was the first time the board ever really, in negotiation, said, this is what we want, and it was really just to become competitive on the top of, of starting guide. And again, that was recommendations from our council. It really just didn't come from us, because he sees other communities and said we're very, we were not competitive at all, so.
Okay, but-
So like this time, we will not have input on the guide.
I will need, I, I don't know if that's, I believe you, but I don't know if that's true, because I'm not privy to-
That's not my intention, because I had no idea that we were involved in a guide, so if that's happening-
And I guess the other upsetting thing is, we're always a year without a contract. A year, negotiations should have started October thirteen, fourteen, I guess, October thirteen, so at the end of fourteen, we had a contract.
I think they always-
We are now into fif, this is, I'm here a long time.
The only reason why this happened-
And it's multiple years that this has happened, multiple contracts. And here we are again, at that point.
On this one, I could tell you the only reason why it's on this one is because we had changing of the guard, and it was just the timing, and with Mr. Featherman, he, it was learning a lot of new things, it was a new position for him, he was not aware of the process at the time, and I think it was just miscommunication of who starts the process when. So again, Mr. Featherman, am I speaking out of turn, or am I saying something I should, you know, that's not true? Because that was my understanding, is that it was just the timing of, of everything.
I don't want anybody to fall on the sword.
No, 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 it's not falling on the sword, it's really-
But, it's a, it's a valid question.
Absolutely.
The second, the third thing is, the sick days that you put up there, we get paid ninety percent. Do you know that our, from what I understand, I haven't collected them yet, but our, we get paid half of our sick, we retire in June, say, we get half of our sick day, February of the next year, and the second half of the sick days, the next year? So we're waiting a long time. Other districts, you leave on June thirtieth, your check is in your hand. We're waiting six months, and then another year to get the other half. Those are negotiated items.
But it's also for budgetary purposes of why that's done, too.
I get it, I get it, but when you're comparing, you have the, the sick guy-
You're still getting that money, though. That's a lot of money you're still getting.
And you're not, that interest is not going in my pocket, that if I got a lump sum, I could invest it, or pay a bill, pay off tuition, whatever. It's sitting for a six months, and then an additional year in the Board of Ed coffers. Yes, I'm still getting the money. That's kind of insulting, to say it in that manner.
But it's not really in our coffers, because it's in our budget, and it's money that we're anticipating, I assume.
But I'm just saying, that was an-
It's also part of the collective bargaining agreement.
Right, I, I get that, too, but it's not-
It's a negotiated item that, that, that we negotiate, and I don't mean to talk over you, Ms. Weber, but it, it, that's, that's an issue that's negotiated between the union and, and the board at the time.
Totally understand.
And I understand your point, and I'm not trying to, to poo-poo your point, but it's, it's, it's something that, that it is what it is, and it can only be changed in negotiations, so.
But for the purpose of this presentation, that wasn't put up there, just like one is not one, one is really C.
Well, but we don't know-
Which is one, two, and three.
We also don't know when everyone gets paid out their, their sick days, we don't know in all those districts, unless you do, in the contracts, and Mr. Mandau, Mandau has them.
I can only just speak to ours.
Right, so-
I didn't research the others.
So it may, it may be the same way in the other districts, they may get it over three years, we don't know.
I know districts say you get it on the day you leave.
But what we do know is that that's a negotiated item in your collective bargaining agreement that-
That's, that's not an argument, that is. But for the purpose of the presentation, just like one is not one, one is C.
I understand your point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, and I have your word, that we will work together to create a guide, once we come up with money, because I'm telling you, we didn't see what you're saying we saw. So we were under the assumption you guys put it all, and you, and I just think it's fair that we communicate, and I wish we have communi, I wish we had communicated in the past, so we wouldn't be here. So I just want to make sure that we're communicating, the negotiating team, as well as the president, we are all on the same page, and I think that's what's happening. I don't think we're always on the same page, which is causing a whole lot of conflict. So that's what I wanted to say. Okay?
Totally agree.
Any further questions or comments from the board or the public? Mr. Mandela, thank you for going through that exercise and, and getting all those contracts and speaking to all those BAs and, and putting this together, and hopefully, it's, you know, it's eye-opening to me, and hopefully to everyone else in, in a bunch of different ways, and I'm, thank you to, to the, the teachers and the representatives for, for pointing out what, what they feel are, are issues that we need to work on, and hopefully, this takes us to a, a, a new place, and we get our contract in place sooner than later.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Okay, before we move on to business, I just do have one announcement, for anyone who is interested in the council election this evening. The results are in. Mr. Tanella, eight hundred and eighty votes, Mr. Cumbrus, seven hundred and fifty-three votes, and Mr. Mafucci, seven hundred and forty-four votes. So congratulations to Mr. Tanella and our new councilman, Harry Cumbrus, I think that's how we say his name, Cumbrus. And, and so, yeah, that's it. Let's move on to the, to the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes, may I have a motion for B one and B two? B one is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, and B two is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Board of Education pursuant to the Administrative Code, that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which exceed that appropriation and violation of the code. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala?
Yes. Under business, may I have a motion for items B three through B twelve? B three is a motion to approve the heat, I hate this word, the heat acclimatization protocol for the Cedar Grove High School football program. B four is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove School District's membership in the NJSIAA for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. B five is a motion to approve the payment for the student whose ID is listed to attend the CGHS project graduation, in the amount as listed therein. B six is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove Board of Education's participation in the Public Employer Trust Prescription Program for the policy period beginning July two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. B seven-
That would be sixteen.
I'm sorry, sixteen. Thank you.
Right? Yes.
We'll amend that to sixteen on B six. B seven is a motion to approve the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen tuition rates as set forth, excuse me, in that item. B eight is a motion to reaffirm the two-year contract between Delta Dental of New Jersey and the Cedar Grove Board of Education, effective July first, two thousand and fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, as set forth in that item. B nine is a motion to approve the one-year contract between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and Benny Card Services for Prescription Drug Management Services, effective July first, two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. B ten is a motion to approve the one-year contract between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield of New Jersey for Health Insurance Services, effective July first, two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. B eleven is a resolution which authorizes the board, I won't read the whole thing, but authorizes the board to, uh, the authorize the, I'm sorry, the project to be put out for rebid, this is the bleacher project. There was an issue regarding the bidding, and we need to put it out to rebid, and this resolution authorizes the board to do that. B twelve is a motion to approve the two thousand and fifteen extraordinary aid application submission. May I have a motion for those twelve items, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I just have a question. I might have, this might have been the meeting that I missed. I didn't realize that we had put out a bid already, and then there's a rebid on the gym. So if this goes, moves forward, what is the work timeframe?
The timing is, is going to be a big issue. Do you want to speak on that, Mr. Featherman?
Sure. We don't have the exact timeframe, but it does put things in jeopardy in terms of concluding the project before the start of school.
Is it because we have to do this rebid, if we didn't have to do, we would have been on schedule?
Yes.
Gotcha. So the plan was to do this over the summertime?
The plan still is, we're, we're going to look at just how far behind we are, where we can catch up some time, and what contingencies we'll put in place, to still go forward this summer and make accommodations in the gymnasium. See, Andrea's looking very anxiously. We're going to look at that very closely to see if we can still do it.
Great, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Personnel may have a motion for S one through S eight. S one is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on HIB from April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, regarding the case that's set forth in that item. S two is a motion to approve Pete Velardi, JV softball volunteer coach at Cedar Grove High School, beginning May thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. S three is a motion to revise Valentino Salerno custodian at the step and grade as set forth therein for successfully acquiring the Black Seal Low Pressure License. S four is a motion to approve the decision by the Board of Education to adjust the district calendar to include an additional day off for Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, for students and staff, as the district did not use all its snow days built into the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen calendar. S five is a motion to authorize the attendance to the programs as set forth in that item. S six is a motion to approve the leave of absences as set forth in that item. And S seven is a motion to approve the students as set forth in that item for classroom observations. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Under S eight, may I have a motion to approve on second reading the acceptable use policies for K-12 Student Network and acceptable use guidelines for the Cedar Grove Public Schools, and the staff network and acceptable use policy for the Cedar Grove Public Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public at this time for comment for items on or off the agenda. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Does the board have any final comments this evening?
No.
And I'll make an announcement of our future meetings. Our next meeting will be May nineteenth, which is one week from tonight, because we have the, the additional day off on what was scheduled to be our next board meeting. So May nineteenth, here in the North End Media Center, seven PM for executive session, eight PM for regular meeting. And then our, our meeting following that is June ninth, two thousand and fifteen, here in the North End Media Center, seven PM for executive session, eight PM for the regular meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Yes, aye.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Sicala.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.